Hello there, you are here with DG the thirty-something, but for some reason my sound uh. Hello, there we are. Okay, you are here on State of the Union with DG the thirty-something. And I am super excited to offer the opportunity for the uh to interview the Peluma candidates on my show this year and uh we are going to be talking about the issues that are facing Peluma. Uh you, so you can check the full schedule, I encourage you to do so because there's several different programmers that are doing candidate interviews. So I encourage you uh you to look at the schedule at KPCA.fm. So uh of course, what is expressed here does not reflect the opinions of KPCA or PCA or its members. And I will not be making any endorsements over the air. So the second half of the show uh will be uh committed to public questions. So you can email questions to DOMAYNE@MABERM-E.com. You can also ask questions via phone at seven oh seven nine eight one seven five seven seven. Or if you're watching on Facebook, you can ask questions there as well. The phones and all the questions are going to be received by my content producer Melissa, so I say be nice to her. We're doing our best over here to field everything at once. So for the purpose of these interviews, I'd like to keep it to questions that address future issues and the candidate's strategies to address them. I'd like to stay away from questions regarding political affiliation, voter history, or the like. Uh and then all the the public questions will be asked anonymously to avoid people wanting to be identified or not being identified. So I am going to start by allowing the candidate that's here to introduce himself.
Hi, good evening. Uh my name is Scott Alonso. I am running for Peluma City Council. I am happy to be here and have this conversation and answer questions and uh communicate with folks about what's been going on. I am a renter. I live on the east side of town near Peluma Valley Hospital. I am on the Peluma Planning Commission. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Library Foundation, raising money for our public library system. Uh I've been a school volunteer here in Sonoma County and I previously worked for the Sonoma County Health Department, serving as their Public Information Officer. I currently work for the District Attorney's Office in Contra Costa County, serving as their Public Information Officer now. So my background's in politics and public affairs and uh I'm really excited to hit the ground running and I feel like I could bring a new perspective to the council with some new energy. Um the youngest candidate in the field. Um but I feel like with my uh mix of experience, I can uh be a a strong voice for working families, uh younger folks uh on the issues that that matter to us, you know, from uh housing to traffic uh to public safety. So I'm ready to tackle these issues and and represent our our town.
Alrighty, so let's get into the questions. So what policies, strategies, or the like do you propose to manage the rapid growth in Peluma while preserving the small town and historic charm? And so I was asked during my first interview to distinguish what rapid meant to me. And so for me, it's uh within the last fifteen or twenty years, the growth that we've seen.
Sure, so uh Peluma is growing. Uh it has grown in the last ten years. Uh I think about by ten or twelve percent. So we are seeing folks wanting to come here. Peluma is a desirable place to live. I think on some level, that's a good problem to have. We are attracting businesses. We are attracting a workforce here. But the challenge uh now is that we're we're facing a housing crisis and what what that is doing is putting a real strain on folks being able to work locally. They're having to uh work elsewhere. Um and so they are not able to afford to live here. Um so it really presents two problems. One, people are commuting here who who do work here in Peluma, or folks that uh live here are are forced to leave uh because they can't afford the the rising uh housing costs or rent costs. So I think at the bottom line is we have to have a balance. I don't, we don't want Peluma to get, you know, huge, but we have to acknowledge we're the second largest city in Sonoma County. Uh we're a desirable place to live. We have a a rich uh history and traditions here. So I think, you know, especially around our downtown area, we really have to look to preserve that. Uh one of the unique things about Peluma is our our heritage homes, a lot of our history. Uh we have a great uh you know, history museum here downtown on Kentucky. Um so we have a lot that attracts folks here, our charm, our heritage. But at the same time, we we have to acknowledge that if we don't grow responsibly, we're gonna price folks out and folks are gonna have to leave. So um there's still some opportunities to grow uh with infill development in downtown and certain parts of Peluma that I think we should be looking at growing and we don't wanna uh infringe upon the urban growth boundary. So if your listeners, Peluma basically has uh a boundary around ourselves that we enacted that we would not build essentially. So that works to prevent sprawl. It's smart land use planning. Um and so it doesn't, so we don't end up like San Jose. So we don't, we don't want that. We wanna be uh a small town, but we also wanna have people be able to live here. So we need to, we need to build up and we need to build in the center of town.
Alrighty, so what additional issue not addressed above is high on your list to address if elected into office?
Well, I think we need to to work to um build more affordable housing. So specifically, you know, as a renter, I see that those challenges firsthand. And you know, we can define affordable in a few ways. You know, there's certainly the the strict formula that the city has, but also we just need workforce housing. You know, we need to have affordable places for families to live and for employers to be able to attract employees here. So we need an above all strategy. Uh Peluma is building a lot of units right now, but those are not affordable units necessarily. So and and or or medium income uh units. So we really need to look at uh those units underneath uh and and be able to have opportunities for folks to be able to stay here. I'm also really interested in uh public safety issues. Uh we have tremendous challenges right now with our public infrastructure and we need to be honest with folks about that. Our our police station is in the old mortuary. Uh all three of our fire stations go down if there's a major earthquake. Our fir- fire station one here in downtown was built in nineteen thirty-eight. So we have incredibly aging facilities that are not up to standards. They don't uh have ADA. They don't have uh adequate workspace or living space for our public safety personnel. So we really have to look long and hard on how we can um provide new locations, new facilities uh for the police department, for the fire department. Uh so we can, as we grow, we still can provide those essential life-saving services. That's a core function of our local government and we have to be able to do that. And lastly, you know, we do have to work worry about traffic. I mean, our roads are the worst in the Bay Area. Uh we need to get more um funding uh revenue for the city to to work on projects like Rainier, work on repaving and uh you know, alleviate some of that traffic problem. It's just, it's getting, it's getting unbearable for folks.
Alrighty, so given the upcoming general plan updates, where do you see Peluma in the next ten to fifteen years?
Well, I think Peluma is, we're we're growing in the right ways and our our general plan uh that was updated in two thousand eight has done a tremendous job providing a a strong vision for our town, recognizing how important the river is. I think we have to keep our eye to that and how crucial that is, not only for tourism and the economy, but for how we should be developing as a city. It's a great amenity. Uh it it is attractive for folks who wanna come here and live here if they can be close to the river, even even see the river if they have a house or an apartment there. So I think future development um along or near the river is important and how we increase our our waterways network there, increase recreational opportunities there. Um that's huge. I mean, we need to frankly, unfortunately, you know, our nineteen ninety-six river enhancement access plan is still not fully implemented. We don't have full connectivity along the Peluma River for bicycle pedestrians and other users. So that's a twenty-two-year-old document that still hasn't been implemented. So there are things we've already done. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to work to ensure that those pieces get put in place as new developments come online. And I think, you know, bottom line for me, you know, talking to folks is that, you know, we don't want two Pelumas. And I I don't mean the traditional east quote first west divide. I actually mean because of affordability. We don't want a Peluma where we only cater or can only have, you know, the very wealthy stayed here. If we don't accommodate growth responsibly for working people, we're not, we're gonna have uh a huge divide between the haves and the have-nots. And that's unacceptable. We have too much history here. We have too many families through multiple generations that have lived here. And frankly, where do our employees live, especially for those who work for the city of Peluma? So I think the general plan needs to look at that and I think we, the the city council and the planning commission, we've done some good things. Uh bringing some projects online that support transit-oriented development, support density. And ultimately, from a policy perspective, you know, we just passed an inclusionary housing ordinance, uh which is huge. I mean, we are, I think, one of the only cities in the county to do that, uh which mandates that developers have to build affordable units on site if it's five units or more. So now there's still an inclusionary fee as an option, but the key there is it's an option. Uh the developer has to demonstrate that they can't build that affordable unit and they have to appeal to the city council that they uh have to pay that or want to pay that inclusionary housing fee. So those are some of the items that are, I think, we need to have enshrined more in the general plan as a planning perspective um and and ensure that we uh can can support some density and support working families being able to stay here.
Alrighty, so uh is there any additional information before we get into the next phase you'd like to provide?
Um, you know, I think uh a a big issue that I I'm also running on is is kind of resident engagement. Uh we have a lot of uh passionate folks in town on a wide variety of issues. But I think the challenge is where do we channel that energy? How do we get folks involved in local government? How do we help educate them or convey to them what local government is and does? Most folks don't know where City Hall is or what the city council is or who's on their city council. Uh and that's a tremendous problem, but I think it's also an opportunity where we've seen with the debate over the bathtubs or the animal shelter recently, where all these people coming out for the first time to a public meeting. I think we need to kind of harness that and capture that and understand how we can make that more sustainable so we can have folks involved in town. I mean, that's ultimately what's really important, not just voting every two years, but wanting folks to get back because there's a lot of commitment to this town and volunteerism, which is fantastic. Um but we also need to look at the local government and how we we uh leverage that. So I'm really passionate about um making City Hall more engaging, such as, you know, updating our very, very old website, uh looking at uh district elections for city council, uh promoting that. Uh so we actually elect our city council by districts right now. We're just citywide. And every single council member except for Kathy Miller lives west of one oh one. So that's a huge challenge. I think we need to be mindful that um we need to look at how people get elected and what our representation looks like on the city council. I think Santa Rosa is doing a great job in adopting district elections. They're the first city in Sonoma County to do that. And this November is the first time they are gonna have district elections. So I think it's something Peluma should consider.
So I gave a big smile because I don't have to ask you about the archaic city website.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. Yeah, it's pretty bad.
It is pretty bad. Alright, so you talked about affordable housing and building up uh and of course not expanding the urban growth boundary. But I'm wondering if you have considered or are advocating for any sort of solutions to this affordable housing because even building up perhaps to the developers, depending on the interest, might not address that issue.
Yeah, I think we need to look at other ways to to work with developers. Everything's a compromise and, you know, we have to ensure that um we don't just oppose projects outright, that we can understand uh where the applicant or the the quote-unquote the developer, but in planning commission lingo, we use we use applicant, but I think for the public developers, the equivalent there. But you know, how do we work with them, understand what they're proposing and what the general plan allows? What's, what does, what are zoning ordinance even allows? And so is there flexibility there? Can we streamline anything? Should we have density bonuses? You know, do we allow um for any kind of trade-offs i- if appropriate, you know? And so I think we have to be mindful of that because we certainly don't wanna um, you know, turn away development necessarily, but not all development's gonna be positive either, you know? So we have to, we have to understand um, you know, what the lay of the land is and also hear from the public too. But I think, you know, looking at density, there isn't a lot of density in town. You know, there is there uh is a height restriction. Uh I think we need to look at that, at least in the downtown area or or other key parts where there's infill that maybe could could go up to five or six stories. Um you know, we we did that on a project earlier this year in the planning commission, the North River Apartments project. We went up a story there. Um and so I think that was a positive move. Um and so I think we need to look at projects like that, you know, to the where we can support.
So you did ta- so you've been talking about uh, you know, of course, increasing the high uh capabilities of development. So I'm wondering, I have a downtown business. I'm on the corner of Kentucky and Western. Uh you know, my clients can't park. They can't, I can't park half the time. Thank God I live close to downtown so I can walk. But I'm just wondering if we are gonna increase development in downtown, how do we then address that kind of gridlock and parking issue that exists?
So I think there's a few things. One, we need to look at more pedestrian bicycle infrastructure and promoting that. I mean, with the smart station, uh we should have folks walking and biking into town when they get off the train. But we also need to have the right public improvements to make it safe to do so. I don't necessarily think that's the case all the time. Um you know, we have a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, uh that's an appendix to the general plan, but a lot of that hasn't even been funded. And that's over twelve years old. So there are projects that we've already identified that should be done. It's really a question of funding. And we've had to cut back so much at City Hall over the years during the Great Recession that there's not a lot of discretionary funding left. So I think we just have to be creative and 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 be honest with the the public that we may have to look at some tax increases to pay for some of that. You know, but the bottom line is, you know, not everyone's gonna walk or bike. Um we're a car culture, which is uh, you know, just the reality. It's not great. You know, we should, that's a long-term uh problem. Um but I think, you know, in terms of parking, either, you know, in working with the time limit, you know, that some, most of downtown's two hours. Uh if that needs to change, you know, I don't know if another parking garage is the answer. That's been talked about for decades to build another parking garage in downtown, but I don't necessarily know if that's gonna do the trick. I think we should look at um possibly charging for parking downtown. I mean, a lot of cities are now doing that. It actually helps with traffic congestion and moves cars around. Um Santa Rosa's been doing it for many years. Um so I think we can, we can look at that. I I know that's not a very popular uh position, but I think we need to work with folks to help them, help local businesses because right now, the the parking is terrible in downtown.
Yeah, it is. Uh so you talked a little bit about, I know that there's a lot of debate about the east and west side divide. I grew up on the east side and now live on the west side, and I actually do think it's a tangible divide. After, again, being from age seven to, I went away for five years, but basically until I was twenty-seven years old, living on the east side. And I do think that there is a very different culture between the east and west side. And uh so I'm kind of wondering how you do bridge that gap? I do think the east side has different characteristics and demographics. The the example I've been using during every candidate interview is that the the actual census district where I grew up is now the one of the poorest in the city. So they have very poor health outcomes compared to, you know, for example, the Cherry Valley District. And so despite the fact that people might not gauge it as the east-west divide, there are these data and facts that do actually separate the east and west side. And so that being said, I'm wondering how we gauge these people necessarily? You talked about the council members not particularly necessarily representing both sides of the city. So one, how do we get these people involved that aren't involved necessarily? And how do we start to remedy these very difficult issues of that divide?
Well, I think first off, to your point about census tracts, we have to let people know that, you know, their health is impacted by where they live. I mean, bottom line. So if you live in a area with lots of traffic, with pollution, with not a lot of access to parks or access to bicycle paths or access to safe walking, your health or your children's health is gonna be in a negative uh manner. You're gonna be impacted in a very negative way. And so it matters uh where you live and how we design communities, how we plan. And so I think the east side, because of the rapid growth, the 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 land use policies on the east side is different than the west side. There isn't necessarily a lot of bicycle, pedestrian, or even just civic uh infrastructure. There, you know, there's just a lot of shopping centers and that's not necessarily conducive to walking and biking and 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 being to have a neighborhood feel necessarily, whereas the west side, right, the downtown. I mean, that is the the jewel of Peluma and it is. It's a great place. But for folks who live on the east side of town, you know, that's a long drive with traffic. It's, the buses aren't, don't have a lot of uh access. And so um we need to think about having more opportunities on the east side of town for people to congregate, to meet, uh to have that community feel. And I think if you just look at what young people can do, there isn't a lot of options for even teenagers in town, on the east side of town. So they have to go out on the west side, you know? And so that's a challenge. Um I think we have to to plan better. It's why I've opposed the the Safeway gas station on the east side of town, which is next to, if not, the lowest uh income school uh in the city, McDowell Elementary. Um you know, and so uh that is, that is a a land use decision that actually is gonna cause worse health outcomes. And and if that project was in a different part, uh let's say, near the Cherry Valley, uh I think the the neighborhood outcry would be even more so uh if it was there on the west side of town. So I think to your point, your first, going all the way back to your first point, I think that that has been exciting to see that the civic engagement uh and activity around the Safeway gas station on the east side of town where these neighborhoods are now getting activated for really probably the first time and a lot of people are understanding the process. So part of that, I I, Santa Rosa has a community advisory board, which is essentially a s- a residence uh way, a le- resident engagement on a citywide level where they take issues that really don't fit in a particular city commission or even on the city council level. Um and so they can bring issues uh to the table, have hearings, and then ultimately advise the city council on these community engagement initiatives. I just think that's a great model. I think Peluma should look at that. And like I mentioned before, I think Peluma should look at district elections for city council. Um that's how we get better connected to the community. You know, it's not that folks on the west side don't look after the east side. I don't think that's the case necessarily. But if you represent your community in a much smaller district, it's frankly much easier to be in tune with that district versus representing the entire city. You're 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 drawn in multiple uh ways. You're stretched out too thin. Um and so I think if we have district elections, it'll give stronger neighborhood voice and a stronger outlet for folks at the local level to to harness that energy. Um so I think we we need to look at that and and ultimately, we need to look at how we do our ratings, you know? Uh city council meetings can be a little stuffy, uh coming down all the way to the old city hall. I think we should look at having more meetings on the east side of town, more public meetings on the east side of town, even at different times, even on the weekend. We should be providing uh daycare on some of these meetings, providing Spanish translation at some of these meetings. If we know that uh, you know, certain populations are gonna be impacted by a big decision, we should do our best to have meetings that are flexible and have daycare and childcare available. Um it's just folks may be working. They can't get down to city council at seven o'clock on a Monday night. And and they may not be able, they may not know how to livestream a meeting. So I think we have to get better about that and I think we have to do, we have to make a concerted effort. It's really a cultural change. Um and and I think we have to, hopefully with the new city manager uh process, the hiring process, we can try to promote that when the new person gets hired and hopefully they'll be committed to that um and to to help engage the community in those ways.
So you did talk about the limited funding for the city for various projects, whether it's walkability, bikeability, growth. And so I'm just wondering if you have any strategies? I hear all the time, oh, it's a poor city. It's a poor city. I don't believe that myself. So I'm just wondering if you have any ideas about how perhaps funding can be leveraged or how revenue can be generated or any way to address this fact that we keep saying that we don't have money to fix the roads, provide recreation, provide walkability, provide bikeability?
Right, yeah, all those things you said we can't really do right now. So the the bottom line is uh we have to look to tax ourselves in some capacity. And that's not just at individuals. That's also businesses too. They have to have skin in the game. I think we have to look at how commercial properties are taxed in this town. We could look at a commercial tax increase. We could look at a real estate transfer uh tax increase, um sales tax, a parcel tax. There are all these options we have. We have to lay it out on the table for folks and help bring them on board and even in the loop on what options are available and what this means for the city. I think right now, uh the council has talked about a sales tax increase. I think that's, that's okay. The challenge with the sales tax is it's inherently regressive. Um now fortunately, Peluma has the lowest sales tax in Sonoma County. Um but there's there's room to grow there. I think no matter what, any sort of taxing measure uh has to be a specific tax. It has to go for specific purposes. Uh and the challenge with that from a political perspective is those are harder to pass. You know, you need a two-thirds vote of the electorate to enact a specific tax. And um that just requires a lot of work and a lot of fundraising and and a whole strategy to get that enacted. But we have to do something. We can't just keep opposing tax increases. And the reason why is because Peluma is essentially on the verge of financial calamity in two years. Uh our payments to CalPERS are gonna be going up a million dollars and we don't have enough revenue coming in to balance the books. Uh our reserves, while John Brown, the current city manager, has been a great job building those back up, those aren't the answer necessarily. Those aren't gonna bail us out. That's not a long-term solution, just to dip into our reserves again. So that might be a short-term uh avoidance of pain, but we really have to look at for a city this size of what we want, what Peluma, what our vision is for Peluma to be a a thriving, vibrant city, which it is right now. That, there's a cost to that. Um and that's why one of the reasons folks should vote no on Proposition Six on the November sixth ballot uh because Proposition Six is the gas tax, uh but that is bringing much-needed revenue to Peluma. We're seeing a million dollars a year extra in our pavement replenishment fund because of that gas tax. That's a helpful tax. You know, there are projects underway right now in Peluma, repaving our roads directly linked to that. So we have to think long-term. Uh we we can't vote no. We can't repeal that. I know that may sound easy to repeal it, but there's real term, real real-time financial costs to the city if we do that.
So I just wanna ask for clarification on that because I know sometimes propositions are kind of backwards. You're saying no to repeal, yes to enact. So do you wanna just explain that proposition a little bit?
Sure, so the uh Republican Party uh in the state of California has uh by a voter initiative gathered enough signatures to put yes on prop- uh Proposition Six on the ballot in November. And if you vote yes, you are repealing the gas tax. So the gas tax was enacted by the state legislature in twenty seventeen and signed into law by Governor Brown. That was Senate Bill One. Uh it's a tax on diesel fuel as well and also the gas tax. Uh the gas tax hat in California hadn't been raised in decades. So um this is a a common sense measure. It's it's bringing in real money to the city. Um and and we're seeing the results right now and across the entire region. It's not just a Peluma benefit. It's a benefit to the entire uh North Bay. So vote no to to keep it.
I thank you. This, it's always one of those confusing things that people tend to mix up. So you talked about engagement and you talked about being the youngest person kind of on the queue for city council. So there has been more uh engagement from younger people after the last presidential election. But locally, I will agree that a lot of people don't know who their city council is, who their mayor is, what impact that has on them. Uh and that's one of the reasons I have my show. So I'm wondering, what strategies have you implemented or are you trying to implement prior to this election to get those younger people involved?
Well, I think we have to, as a city, understand how people communicate and that's something I've brought to the planning commission since I've been on since the summer of twenty seventeen. And having folks just understand that people, you know, don't communicate uh by email necessarily or don't communicate by letters. They uh largely communicate social media uh or digital media and by text messaging. So how does our local government respond to that? That's huge. Uh we need to adapt to the changing times. Um you know, I, when I got on the planning commission, uh a few months into my uh term, I was asking staff to post our uh meeting agendas on social media because they were not being posted. In fact, no city uh committees or council meetings were ever talked about on the city's official social media accounts. I found that stunning uh to me. Um and for months, it didn't happen. And then finally, uh earlier this spring, it it started. And I think that was a huge step. Um it it's not a very big one, but it's something. You know, it's it's how the city presents itself uh to the public and for younger people who will use Facebook, who use Twitter, uh who use these mediums. And so I think we have to be really recog- we have to recognize that and we have to adapt and we have to be able to meet people where they are at. That's our job as local government. We have to go to where they are. We can't expect them to come down to City Hall where we are. That doesn't work. Um it's just, it's just, it's just the reality. Um and so I think on the, you know, I I've made it a a point, you know, in in public service to to Um, and so I think on the, you know, I I've made it a a point, you know, in in public service to to engage young people and to craft policy in a way that. It thinks of young people, that's why I'm in strong support of affordable housing mandates for on developers. Because by and large, we have to support young people and working families who are, may not have a lot of savings or financial equity. To buy a house on their own, it's just not possible right now. And so, that's why I'm so passionate about housing and tenants' rights, and I think that's why I'm I'm talking about those issues. Uh publicly and and on the commission and and before this campaign and certainly during this campaign. Um, you know, we have to remind ourselves that um if we don't plan for the future, no one's gonna be here. You know, because we can't, we won't be able to stay here, we will have to leave Petaluma. And uh I know people who've had to leave, I'm sure you've heard, had friends that have had to leave, uh and it's 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 gut wrenching to hear that. Uh because people wanna stay here, they like Petaluma, that's the, that's the thing, people wanna be here, they wanna live here, they wanna work here. Uh and so we have to keep those opportunities for folks, just like there are opportunities for folks uh older than us to to be here and to stay here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, my family moved up here from San Francisco way back when, 'cause this was kind of where they could develop their American dream, and that dynamic has changed. Quite a bit over the last thirty years, so uh. Given that context, it's it's actually interesting because I'm wondering if. There is a need potentially, or what the the uh procedure is to re. To look at what the committees and commissions do and what their impact is, and again, like how do you, I mean, you've touched a lot on. How you get people involved, but how do you not only get them involved, but how do you make them feel that while they are participating in these committees and commissions? That they're really making an impact?
Well, I think the the reality of local government is, you know, um. You know, the the structure of it is, is that uh sometimes. We have to balance what those committees can take on and what authority and autonomy they have versus what the city council does. And that's a, that's a a push and a pull that every local jurisdiction has challenges with. I think the council um should look at what authority they can uh give uh out, you know, to to divest themselves from. Any kind of decision making, but at the bottom line, at the core of any genuine community engagement strategy is giving actual power away. And giving it to the local residents, and that's actually the scariest thing you can do when you're, when you're an elected official, because. You're a policymaker, you got elected, which is fantastic, uh the voters chose you to to serve a four year term, and so. But it's challenging to turn around it right away and try to give that up. Uh but I think Petaluma has to do that on some level, we have to look at if we need a new new commissions, or do we even need the current ones? You know, how are those structured? Um, it goes to a big piece of one of my campaign platforms is to uh look at the city charter. And look at how government is run, how government it operates, and we need to look at that, it hasn't been looked at in decades. Uh relates to why I'm supporting district elections, and it can relate to what what kind of uh oversight. Uh citizens have on their local government, from the Public Art Committee to the Animal Services Advisory Committee, to the Planning Commission. Um, I think the time is now to have those conversations, just because of the outcry. On some of those hot button issues from the past couple of months, we should have those conversations and see, you know, what. What kind of advisory bodies do we need and what power do they have? Um, you know, I think, but but I I want folks to, you know, to also recognize that the folks that serve on those committees. Currently like myself, some bias, you know, we're volunteers, you know, we're not, we are giving up our time to serve and we should, that's what we got, we we. Hopefully everyone knew that's what they were getting into, but we should be respectful of that, you know, we're not always gonna agree with their decisions. Um but I think to your point, what's the recourse, let's say if. Um the tree advisory committee makes a bad decision or something, right, what's the mechanism there, I don't know if we really have. Thought that out necessarily on on a multiple of these commissions, now the planning commission, people can appeal us, you know, we've 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 been appealed, it doesn't happen very often. Um, but I think to your point, do folks even know that, do they know they can do that, I, they may not, you know. Developers certainly know that, you know, when they come before us, but do people know that, and so I think. We need a whole civic education campaign, and uh I think we have to harness a lot of the energy we've seen, which has been really great. Uh since the twenty sixteen election, um and tho- those things are all positive. Um but how do we sustain it, I think that's the hardest challenge we have, at least on the citizen engagement side.
So you talked about district elections, and while it might sound intuitive, I'm wondering if you can just explain that a little bit better, what what that means, basically.
Sure, so Petaluma is, well, let me, yeah, let me just take a a a a brief overview on Petaluma, we're we're unique. In 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 the entire North Bay, we have the largest city council, we have seven, besides Santa Rosa, we have seven members. Uh, the mayor counts as one of those members, now the mayor is separately elected. Um and that's, and all seven of those positions are citywide, meaning they represent all sixty four thousand people. Um even non-voters, so um, I think. But given the reality of how Petaluma is growing and changing and the issues that are happening, and and the reality is who's getting elected and how hard it is to get elected. We have to support our neighborhoods and 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 working folks uh who who can't run a giant campaign, can't run a citywide campaign, so essentially we would have. And and I, and and I wanna kick this off, wh- if I'm elected, is six districts that are drawn independently. Uh that are drawn in in a public process and in public meetings, and that therefore we would elect city council members based on those six districts, and then keep. The at-large mayoral position, so that the mayor would be still a citywide position. Now to do any of that, it would require a charter amendment, we are, Petaluma is a charter city, meaning we have in different rights than a a non-chartered city. We have a little more autonomy on these iss- on these decisions, and so I think it's something we should look at. Um, and and we have to also understand the reality that um you know, there is a law firm in Southern California that is suing local governments. Uh under the California Voting Rights Act, uh basically forcing jurisdictions to adopt district elections, because inherently. Um, there is systematic discrimination in local government, in some areas, I'm not saying that's here, but certainly in areas with a, where large non-white population. Uh and there's not, uh those folks aren't being represented in local government. So this uh law firm is using the California Voting Rights Act that was passed and signed into law in the early two thousands. To enact, force local governments to enact district elections, because we need to have better representation. And so I think with Petaluma's growing Latino population, I think that's certainly right in the, our wheelhouse to consider. And I frankly don't really wanna wait until we get a a letter threatening us, let's work together now before we're forced to do it on a very strict timeline. If the Pe- if the city Petaluma receives that that lawsuit, or the threat of a lawsuit.
So and you said that this process would be, so is it decided by city council, like given public input, like how are those lines drawn?
Well, that would be up to us, yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no rhyme or reason, I mean, Santa Rosa just went through it last year, and I think that's a pretty good model. Um where they had multiple public meetings, they did hire a consultant. Um, now, the challenge with Santa Rosa was that um, that you know, the consultant drew the lines. Uh and then the city council uh uh, you know, voted on it. To me, that's, that makes me a little uncomfortable, 'cause the city council is essentially voting on their own district lines, which I think is somewhat of a conflict of interest, so I would actually. Wanna talk to folks and have us all consider putting that to a public vote. Uh so it's not necessarily the city council that's voting on their own interests, the public gets to weigh in. It's all, the lines have been drawn by a certainly a a professional, but with public input at multiple public meetings. And that ultimately would go before the voters to to approve.
So we got a question from the public, which kind of speaks to what you said before about services for. Youth and teenagers, uh when I was living in. I was one of the founding members of the Petaluma Teen Council, which is what it was called before the Youth Commission. At that time, we had a teen center, and then we also, which still exists, have services at the Phoenix Theater. Uh and so, the the question is really, what then, what are ideas to actually provide? I, I always said there's a lot of funding in general for uh younger children, but the teens are a demographic that's. Regularly left out, and so I'm wondering, you know, obviously for other youth, but then for teenagers as well. 'Cause they are two very different demographics to address.
Yeah, I think we need to to look at a few things, one, our our public library has a lot of services for all age groups. Uh from young children to teens to older adults, how do we work with the library to leverage that? And and understand that these services are available, and I think that's just working, working with the library system in the city. But overall, we need to have, we need to prioritize uh those populations. And and put some some teeth behind it, AKA funding, you know, we need to look at a- at those after-school programs, those weekend programs. Understanding what's, what kind of, uh and then holistically, what kind of developments are in town for for young people, you know. Um, you know, how, what what kind of amenities are there, there aren't that many amenities to do, uh unless if you go to the west side of town. So I think that speaks to really my concern of a lot of the lack of civic space and or um just not. There's not local businesses necessarily catering to younger adults on the east side of town. Um, you know, we're gonna get a mini golf course on the very north end of town. Uh near the Quality Inn, which will be a great amenity for for younger folks to use. Um, but that's still a ways away, so projects like that, how do we get creative, how do we incorporate more, you know, art? More uh more skating, more bicycling, more pedestrian activities on the east side of town. And I think we just have to work with, you know, the Youth Commission's fantastic, not many cities have that, and I think that's a tremendous opportunity to engage them and help. Understand whatever the needs are, they're working on, they tackle a lot of great policy issues, which is awesome, from opioid use to to mental health. Um, you know, uh to what's going on at the Petaluma City School District over the years, right, they really can be a voice and call those things out. Because they they see it firsthand, you know, I I don't necessarily know if. Uh us older adults will see it that same way, so we really need them at the table too, and and to help understand. Where can we, where can we grow in those areas? Um but the bottom line is, if we don't have things for people to do, they're gonna find other things to do that may not be the. In in our best interest necessarily, so, you know, I think we're seeing the rise of a, you know, opioid use amongst our our youth. Uh and that's a huge concern, uh because it's highly addictive, um and it's really causing a lot of pain in our community. And so we need to work with our youth to to divert them away from that, but they have to have things to do. That, I mean, we have to give them options, and if we don't, then they're gonna find options for themselves.
Yeah, we used to hang out in the Safeway parking lot. Uh so then the follow-up question was about elder services, and I. I guess maybe are there any specific ideas, given our current infrastructure, to provide services for elders? In the community, and how to keep them engaged?
Yeah, I think we need to keep supporting the good work at Petaluma People's Services Center, you know, they're one of our our main. Uh socials or nonprofits that provide social services to older adults, and uh there's a lot of programs they run that help engage. Uh with the, with folks that are older, but we could be doing more, and we need to leverage what Petaluma People's Services Do- Center is doing, so we can. Be more in touch, I think the bottom line is we want seniors to be able to age in place, to feel that community. And we don't want them to feel isolated, I mean, that's one of the biggest uh challenges with um. A- as folks age, is that they, they're feeling that social isolation, so um, you know, we have um. You know, a challenge because of how Petaluma just, we are a little spread out, and so if we don't have transportation. Uh options, for instance, then folks won't leave their house, 'cause they can't, right, there's ADA access, there's just general accessibility. It's not convenient, so I think if we can uh work with uh. Social services, uh providers like Petaluma Services on, like mobile vans, you know, getting more parat transit, helping get. Older adults out in into the downtown or other parts of uh Petaluma, I think that'd be huge. Um, but again, we need to to look at our civic spaces too, you know, as we develop, as we develop public infrastructure and bring projects online. Are there things for seniors to do in tho- in those developments, and by and large, that that doesn't necessarily happen? Um, and so I think we really need to to look at that, but again, I I wanna just. You know, promote the library again, because the library is a safe space, it's an open space, it welcomes everybody, and they do have a lot of great programs. Uh but they're also constrained by space too, so how do we work with them to to bring programming in? Uh that supports seniors and that the city can also invest in, because we, the library can't do it by itself, you know, we have to have a seat at the table too.
So you've talked a lot about civic spaces, I know that can be kind of a global issue, but then also a physical issue. So I know you talked about perhaps moving in the city council meetings, but do you have any ideas about? Or is it even in your thought process about physically moving where some of these services are? You know, the city hall or anything like that?
Uh I think all options should be on the table, uh I don't think we should be landlocked in, uh based on current, what current spaces are. I think the Lucchese Center i- i- with all the the amenities there, you know, with the parks and whatnot. Uh that's a great location, but the building's really old, you know, we need a new building there, it needs to be modernized. Uh we, you know, the senior center is right over there too, but that's a very small space as well, i- it's not very welcoming. Uh we need to, we need to revamp those spaces, and 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 understand how we can promote more of a a civic field there. Uh I think certainly the fairgrounds presents an opportunity for for responsible growth and and bringing maybe some civic space there. As we look at that, I mean, it's a sixty acre parcel in the middle of town. Um, and and the library's there, so how do we, you know, leverage and and the swimming center's there too, so there's already existing uses there that are public. Um and so how do we work that into the fairgrounds, I think is something that we should all consider. Um, excuse me, I, you know, with the way Petaluma has grown, you know, where city hall is currently. I don't know if it's necessarily convenient for everyone, you know, the majority of the population of Petaluma lives east of one oh one. So, I think we have to look at where we put our civic buildings and and um. You know, that, again, I think, I think we should look at that, I think all options should be on the table, there are no sacred counts here.
So uh the next question is, is there has been a marked increase in homelessness. Uh however you define it, and uh there are certain areas, like the library, where they tend to. Hang out, uh another place during the winter is the Keller Street Garage, which is right next to my office, that's why I've known it. And so again, I don't think homelessness is some easy cookie cutter way to. You know, there's no easy way to address it, but is there anything we can do as a city to help address this issue? I know we have the Mary Isaac Center, but it's impacted, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think homelessness is the biggest uh. Issue that we we face as a society, it's unacceptable, we have almost three thousand people in our county that are experiencing homelessness. Out of that, there's five hundred and fifteen young people, which is just an astronomical number, and frankly, just. Ma- makes you sick, that there's that many people in a community like this that are homeless, now those numbers are countywide. And and Petaluma certainly has our share, not as much as Santa Rosa, but the 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 impact certainly trickles down to us here in South County. And I think um, you know, the bottom line is we need housing for those folks. We need housing for everybody, especially folks experiencing homelessness, why? Because they're homeless. They need to be put in a permanent place, shelters are a temporary solution, they are not, you know, if we build more shelters, that's not this, that's in my view, not the solution. We have to look at permanent supportive housing with wraparound services, and I think there are models that that. Other cities are looking at, and we should, we should be open to that. Um, but the challenge with the city versus the county, that you know. We have to work, look at also enhancing mental health services for folks in Petaluma. Um, we do have some mental health uh through the county uh located in Petaluma, but it's not necessarily full time. There's more work that the city could do, um but again, that that's a financial decision, you know, we have to look at uh how we're gonna provide for that. Um, even supporting our law enforcement agency and how they deal with uh folks who are experiencing mental illness. And and making sure they have the resources they need with the county, so that's a partnership we can play a role in. Yeah, either through funding a mobile support team with with more accessibility here in Petaluma. And a mobile uh support team for folks at home is uh essentially a a county behavioral health workers working with law enforcement. To go out on calls, you know, so when there is a call, um the law enforcement personnel has pro- professionals with them. To help de-escalate the situation or get someone into services, but right now, we don't, we don't have a lot of that in Petaluma, uh because of funding. And so I think we need to to look at that and working with the county, um but I think the bottom line is, you know, the the. The homelessness issue i- i- it boils down to housing, and we don't have housing for for low income uh folks. And that that impacts who's gonna be homeless, um and so we need to craft policy and promote uh development and funding for. For folks who are experiencing that.
Yeah, and unfortunately, our mental health services across the country just keep being defunded, so. That is an issue, so we are nearing the end, so I'm wondering if you have any other comments, we're still accepting questions. I am still accepting questions, if anyone has any, but I'm just wondering if there's anything that hasn't been addressed that you would like to address?
Well, uh folks can go to my website, it's uh www dot Alonso for F O R Petaluma dot com, if they wanna. Read more or uh shoot me an email, I'm happy to sit down and grab coffee or or tea and and chat about what's been going on, I think. Read more or uh shoot me an email, I'm happy to sit down and grab coffee or or tea and and chat about what's been going on, I think. Um you know, Petaluma, we have a lot of opportunities here to to keep growing and 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 I mean growing just civically too, not just development wise. But we can, we can continue to grow as a city, um but I think some, we have to move past. Some of the old battles in town that have kind of either artificially or just kept. You know, kept on going and I think we need to move forward and find uh solutions and and get things done. And and be creative and and look after our public health and our public infrastructure and our um you know, public safety, I mean, those are huge issues. And they're not gonna be solved overnight, but um if we don't talk about them in an open way, then nothing's gonna get done, so. Uh I'm here to raise those issues and um I'm happy to be at the table and but I wanna hear from folks too, so we can work together.
So just for clarity, your website is for the number four or the word?
No, F O R, yeah, so not, not the number, yeah, so Alonso for Petaluma, but yeah.
So F O R, okay, just so, I just wanna make sure that people can contact you if they want. Alrighty, so I will close up by saying that uh all these shows. Are, of course, they live on my Facebook page, if you're seeing them there, also by the end of the week, I have them on my website. Which is D O M E N I C A dot ninja, so you can uh check out the video there. Uh as well as the contact information for the candidates were there, of course, the city clerk has it as well. Uh and so and I've also decided to do a show on election night, so I'll be here from seven to eight, you'll get to hear a little bit and more. Specifically about how I feel about the issues, uh so thank you so much for joining us, next week will be Dave King. Uh and again, you are here on State of the Union with DG the thirty something. Again, please check out K P C A dot F M for the schedule of all the candidate interviews, I know we have a programmer and I'm so sorry, it's right in front of you, but. Uh that is doing the uh school board interviews too, so that is a really important thing in my opinion this year, so. Again, please check out that schedule and check in, so thank you so much for joining us.